I call this Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education Special Meeting Work Session Together for April 25th, 2017. Laura, will you call the room?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danic?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Momgar?
Here.
Mr. Shulte?
Here.
As you will see in the back of the room, the Open Meetings Act is posted. Board, tonight I ask each of you to hold all questions, all questions, until the end of the presentation. Each of us will be having one-on-one meetings with Lanny and Dr. Joel later on. We will need to be done tonight by 5:40 in order to take a break and prepare for our meeting at 6 o'clock. Do you have any questions with me?
No. It was just a whole.
Is that like a trick?
That was a trick. I'm still a teacher. Okay, very good. I will go ahead and turn this right over to Lanny.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Duncan. So, the items tonight are coming from the Strategic Planning Committee where Connie, Annie, and I served for the last almost year. Last summer, as you know, as a board, we set an annual goal to reach out to our community to gather their priorities so that we could put together a five-year strategic plan. And last fall, our Strategic Planning Committee identified future focus, inclusion, and unity as the goals for our process. So with the help of Leadership Resources, five future-focused questions were developed. These questions were presented to our community through an inclusive process at staff meetings, parent meetings, an online survey, four open forums, and at 49 community groups. In whole, 38,000 stakeholders were engaged, and we received responses from 3,800. In January and February, the Community Study Team reviewed the responses from our community and identified five themes. Tonight, the Community Study Team will be unveiling the five themes resulting from our community engagement process, and tonight, we will begin our work as a board to take these themes, the voices we heard from our community, and craft a five-year strategic plan. At this point, I would turn things over to John Neal, who led this from the staff perspective, and ask him for any comments he'd like to make.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boswell. I just wanted to remind the board that this whole process came about from the goals that you set last August. The goal was to have, go through a process that would bring about the community priorities to the board for inclusion in the strategic planning process by May 1st. We have six days to spare, so we're on time and under budget, as Scott would say. As part of that process, an integral part of the process was including Leadership Resources in both the planning and the development of a plan to reach out to the community as well as guiding us along the process. They provided an outside voice that could stand beyond the district and help us make sure that we are reaching out truly to our community, and also to make sure that we are capturing the voices in an authentic way that brings to you your wishes of the community and the priorities that they have. So I'm going to turn things over to our leader from Leadership Resources, Dan Cedar, who will guide us through a description of the process and share the themes. So, Mr. Cedar.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Lanny. One comment, and you probably know this of John, but he is amazing at not only handling all the logistics and coordination of the details, but also doing it in the strategic things in mind. As you hear what I'm about to share today, just keep in mind the work that had to take place behind the scenes. So, John, thank you for all that you've done. Lanny, as well, thank you and Annie and Connie for the guidance you've provided through this process. Annie, in particular, I want to thank you for challenging me and the group to make sure we kept that divergent thinking going, and you'll see evidence of that divergent thinking coming out here shortly. But again, it's been nice to build upon as a team working together on this. And overall, Lincoln Board of Education, thank you for your faith in having us come in and help you with this. It's been an honor, a privilege, and I've really enjoyed this, and realizing we're not done yet, but where we're at so far, I think you'll hear and see, we've made some great progress with a lot of people's input. So what I'd like to do now is to continue and give an update of this process. If, in your handouts up there, if you've got this hourglass-shaped-looking diagram, I'm going to reference this for just a little bit here throughout the presentation, and the intent is to give you some perspective and context of what we've been doing, why we've been doing it, and how it's played out. And ultimately, what you're going to see here up on the screen is the color of blue represents the areas that we've finished or concluded to this point. The hinge pin in the middle, or the green button in the middle called Presenting the Strategic Plan is where we're at today, literally. And then we'll also talk about in the red section what's next and what's coming beyond this. So with that said, I'd like to just provide an overview of some key initial steps, and Lanny hit a high level of this. I'm going to hit a little more detail right now. Early on, a key thing we had to decide is what information do we want to gather and obtain from the voices? It's one thing to say we want to collect people and get their opinions, but to what extent and what about? So I'm going to briefly talk through these questions, some of the rationale behind it, and obviously, at the end of the meeting, as Connie noted, we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers. The early question that was asked of folks that participated in these open forums was related to describing that successful high school student at the end of their journey. What were those skills? What are the knowledge elements? What were some of the attitudes? And so, while it sounds like a simple question to ask, and I happened to participate in one of these forums myself along the side of some other citizens, I was amazed at the breadth of just a few different people's perspective and how they took this question and just blew it out into lots of different perspectives. And that was designed, the first question, was just to open our minds and brains to, we've got to think of this pretty broad. It's not just about pure knowledge. So I was amazed how well that played out. The second question then caused people to have to reflect on their past experience, and how does our system here in Lincoln compare with other systems they've experienced? And if they haven't experienced any others, at least to rate the system on a scale of one to five on how well is it doing after delivering a world-class experience? And the key here was to cause people to judge and have to make a judgment on the system, good or bad, right or wrong. The key was to get a starting point. And the third question then built upon that, and that is, okay, whether you set a three or a five or a one, what do we need to do to get toward a five? And if you're at a five, how do we maintain a five? And so the third question really got people to think about what's it going to take to grow and expand and build toward that desired experience for our students? And that's when questions four and five start coming in and getting them to start prioritizing and then thinking more divergently. Question four is, okay, in light of everything we've just talked about and got you thinking about, what's that one thing over the next five years that's the most important? So now we've, I always like to use the metaphor of an accordion. So the first question was really more of an accordion opening, and the second question was starting to push it closer together to judge, and the third question was opening it. This question's picking one, it was closing it again. And then the last question was more of that divergent thinking and opening the mind of, okay, folks, if you can dream big, if nothing was impossible, what would we want for our students? What would be in the best interest of the students and the families we serve? And so, by the end of this, we've got people really opening up their thought process. And I can just refer, I can think back to the ladies I sat next to in a public forum down at the South Side of Lincoln here, and just some of the thoughts I heard, I was just blown out of the water. So I think you'll, for those who haven't had a chance to look at some of the data and the information embedded within there, you'll see some really interesting stuff. So I encourage you to do that. But these questions were just a starting point, because ultimately, we had to take these questions and go out and actually get this input. So we knew initially we were going to have a mixture of forum that was going to work together on disseminating the information and creating some type of strategic themes for you, and knowing that, we went out there really to collect as much data and information as possible. So keep in mind, when we're on these sessions asking for input, we weren't asking for any decisions to be made or any final consensus. It was merely data gathering and information gathering and opening up people's minds. It officially started with an administrators' meeting at LPS back in early August, and literally, that was the first time some of these questions were run past some folks to, so to speak, test out the questions and make sure the questions worked. And then quickly after that, the game plan was is to reach out to 10 to 20 different groups of people in the community to get this diverse viewpoint of what's best for LPS. So that was the game plan. Also, early on, in this early phase, is when I was involved in an early session to observe the very first session. I think Eric and a few others led the session, and we were there to validate the process, learn a few things, adjust, and then tweak things, because as you can imagine, it's an iterative process, and we did make some adjustments along the way to get better and better. All along, there's a key component in here called the writers, and the writers, you're going to hear from some of them today, but we wanted some writers to be taking this information from all these different viewpoints and starting to compile and consolidate and really make the message out of all the information. So that was the intent at the beginning. Amazingly, and on one hand, it was a blessing, on the other hand, it was a curse. And the blessing was, we got way more information than we intended. And the curse is, that means there's a lot more information to deal with, and you'll hear more about that in a little bit from our writers and the researchers. But the good news was, is there were 49 community sessions conducted versus the 10 or 20 we initially shot for. I want to, again, I want to give credit to the subcommittee and the work team as well. We wanted diverse input, we got it. And it went across the organization, across this community, and well over 700 participants, live in-person interactions facilitated by different LPS staff. Ultimately, though, those invites went out to staff, students, and parents, those 38,000 invitations that went out, I believe, helped trigger some of that interest in the community, among their families, among their local community organizations. And at the end of all this, there was well over 3,800 responses that were captured, tabulated, and again, in a few minutes, we're going to hear more about what that looked like. So that was the good news, we got a lot of input out of the gate. Now, following that piece, we wanted to involve this forum, and we eventually called this forum the Community Study Team. And that group, I led the sessions with them, and those three sessions I led was to help this group of people take all this information, start boiling it down, and creating something that can help you all for your strategic plan. And once again, our writers were involved in this. Just really quick, today in the audience, we've got members of the Community Study Team, and in a short amount here, you're going to hear from the writers and the researchers. You're also going to hear from six of the various members of this team sharing some of their perspective about the themes that we're going to unveil today to you. And then at the very end, we'll come back to the slide and also introduce everyone else that's here to show support for this process. So ultimately, the simple task we asked them was to take all this information and convert it into something usable for the Board of Education on behalf of LPS. So right now, I'm going to turn my seat over here to Leslie and Rob to talk more about the data, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening.
Howdy. The purpose of the next four slides that we're going to go through very briefly, the dive just a little bit into the data collection and data analysis details, know that there's a lot more that we can say. People have questions later on. We're glad to go farther into the collection and analysis process. We're just going to hit the highlights so you get a sense of what the collection and analysis process was like.
We're going to take a multi-month process and describe it in five minutes.
Yep.
Good job.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah.
Rockin'. Okay. This repeats a little bit of what Dan talked about, but from a slightly different lens. So from our viewpoint, as the researchers/writers, and by the way, Sarah Salem was also involved in the writing process, and we consulted with her about the collection and analysis process as well. The stage one planning stage was mostly about revising the items, because the wording of the items was very, very key to the whole process. So planning, revising the items, figuring out how the survey was going to go out, what the platform was going to be, the details involved in that.
And part of the issue is, you have to have a slightly different format for the items for an online survey than you do for a live facilitated discussion. So it required a little bit of tweaking to make it work on that online format.
Yep. So, stage one and two, our angle on the facilitated discussions was, as Leslie said, how the questions should be worded, and then also, there were some details to be involved in how the records were going to be kept, how the comments were recorded, and what was going to happen with the comments after that. Stage four, from the survey data, as Dan said, we had a massive response, an overwhelming response. Every week, we downloaded more and more and more and more and more responses. We had a system involved where we downloaded all the responses every week, and we kept them in a secure location behind password, and those got ready for a data analysis. In stage five, the data analysis occurred of the facilitated discussions comments and the online survey comments. That analysis process involved, just very briefly, getting comments in a spreadsheet in an organized way. Our team divided up the first 200 comments on each dataset and went through a process, a qualitative analysis process called Open Coding and Axial Coding, where codes were established. Unique to each question, the same codes were used on similar questions across the facilitated discussions and the online surveys. We made sure the codes, we started with a whole bunch of codes, we narrowed it down to a final set of codes, we made sure the codes worked. We got a set of brave, nine brave coders from around the district, trained them, did some iterative reliability, made sure everything was working right, and then sent them assignments every week. And those coders kept up with us and got everything coded. And then stage six, there's a whole lot of details in stage six about how we went from analysis to summaries, that process.
And a quick comment about the coding. We gave them not only the brief words that were used as codes, but definitions of those, and also some illustrative examples to help ensure a continuity of interpretation so that we could get that iterative reliability.
So, if you'd like to know more about any of that, either ask questions or, in the PowerPoint version of this slide that details, is actually a hot link that takes you to a much more explanatory document. I don't think it works in the PDF version, but we're glad to provide that link for you. So, you're not supposed to be able to read this. This is a picture of just the first part of one of the datasets. This is the dataset for item one. This is what the coders saw. All of the codes were numbered and each put in a row, and the entire full text was available, and then coders could use up to three codes using pull-down menus to assign codes to items. And it went on and on and on and on from here. Some quick numbers. These are similar to the numbers that Mr. Boswell and Dan said earlier. Number of participants, number of questions, and approximate number of coded comments for the online survey databases, the facilitated discussion databases, a brief summary of the coding process that we talked about earlier. The result, the first result of all this are 15 theme and representative quote charts. And these are also available for you. These are, this is the first summary process where all of the themes that emerged out of the datasets are represented there with a description, as Leslie said, and then representative quotations from the databases are provided for those themes. Those theme and representative quote charts turned out to be key to the community groups' process. That's one of the major pieces the community group used to develop their summaries. And that last dashed point down at the bottom, used by the community group to develop the overall themes in this presentation, that's shorthand for a very long process. The community group went through, and then Leslie and Sarah and I went through, along with John, along with Dan, along with members of the board. I forget how many drafts we were up to by the end of the initial, of the summaries that you're going to see tonight.
Quite a few.
But all those are available if anyone wants to see them.
And super quick, I've never seen such a large qualitative database in all my years of doing research. The nine coders that helped were critical. Without the support and help of the coders, we would not have been able to turn this much data around on such a quick timeline, so I wanted to mention that.
We promised that there would be about 300 comments a week. It turned into, by the end, or 700 to 900 comments a week that they were coding.
And they kept up and were just fabulous, did a terrific job.
So the last slide that you're also not supposed to read is what, a sample of what the theme and representative quote charts look like. We think that's all we have to say about that.
Perfect. Thank you.
In case you couldn't tell, they have a passion for what they do. For those who didn't have a chance, do you still have the video up live with the video link you did initially, the instruction video? If you really want to see a much more animated, probably a little more illustrated version of it, he did about a five-minute video for everyone's benefit on the committee, and it was phenomenal. So today, you got the Cliff's Notes version of that. So, at this point, so the data at hand, this work-study team needed to take this data, and we asked them to focus on a handful of things now to start filtering in their minds what to do. And one of the first things we asked them to do is individually, in light of the information in front of you, what are the two to eight themes that you're seeing, that you're perceiving from this data? And keep in mind, whatever themes we're identifying, we want to make sure the filter is always on what's best for the mission of LPS. It's also what's best for the current student base, the current 41,000 students in the system, but also, we're doing what's best for the future students as well. So no small task, but the group has to take the data and start analyzing and identifying themes. And what we did among three meetings is just this, I'll give you a high-level overview on this. The first session was really about getting the group together, getting to know each other, getting them to think individually first. We paired them up, got them discussing. Eventually, they ended up in a small group, and their small group then got together and conversed and shared, and started compiling their first version of these two-day themes. And at the end of that first meeting on the 25th of January, every group shared with the entire audience. And the audience wasn't just the study team, it was the subcommittee of the board, it was the project team that we're with, and Dr. Joel had, I think, about eight other resources on hand in case there's questions about anything in the LPS system. So we were well represented that night. And it gave everyone a chance to hear for the first time the various themes that were being drafted. And by design, we told folks, this is going to be an iterative process, so we wanted them to sleep on it. We had some assignments in between then and the next meeting. They came back, the second meeting on the 1st of February, went back to their same groups, met again, reconfigured, tweaked, modified, honed, cleaned up their version. And long story short, at the end of that meeting, they shared one more time out loud with everyone in the audience. And keep in mind, the entire time, the ESU unit, the writers, were in the room listening and observing and taking notes, because their job was to synthesize all the data, not only in the system that they alluded to, but then what we're hearing anecdotally among these two meetings. And so we flipped it, the third meeting, we flipped things around, and we had that study team sit back and relax. You guys remember that relaxing part? They sat back and relaxed, and this time, the writers came forward and said, here's what we heard. And so it really gave the writers that first official chance to post the themes that were identified from this group, and it gave the audience, in this case, the study team, a chance to react and help revise and tweak. And as we just alluded to, there have been multiple iterations thus far, and I'm not even sure which iteration we're on. John, have you kept track by chance?
Yeah, I have. I have to go back and look at the folder. But it may.
Okay. I'm going to guess eight, but it's probably more than that. So the key here, though, is we're relying on the writers with all this, they have the information and the data background in their minds, they know the process going on, they've heard all the input, and so now they're the ones that have helped then finalize this, the unveiling of these themes we're going to share tonight. Also, in the last few days, including yesterday, I've been meeting with the Strategic Planning Committee, with the board representatives, and the whole intent is, is my role is to make sure we're staying objective, we're staying on the process, we're staying pure to what we intended the whole time, but also keeping me honest with that process as well. And so officially, as of yesterday, we officially did finally hand off the themes after the, again, the eight or 18th version of those things. And that's why today, we're at this little center pin here, and that is the official presentation of those themes to get you started. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to get involvement from the committee that was involved in this, and they're going to come up one by one, and they're going to just speak briefly to the themes and then share some of their personal insights. So let me just offer this up there, the five themes that were landed on, which we're going to see more about here in just a second. The first theme, number one theme, was, where'd my notes go? Academic success was number one. Number two was future-ready global citizens. Number three was support for students. Number four was support for educators. And number five was family and community partnerships. And so what you're going to see here on the screen in a few minutes is the full theme along with some of the descriptor to support some of the group's input. And keep in mind, these themes, as Lanny said, will be up to you guys to accept these themes and really take these themes and convert them into the actual strategic planning document and the actual strategies and priorities. And then following that is when Steve and his staff get involved with actually, how do we enact these things? So, with that said, how about Cory? Would you mind coming up, Cory, and start us off?
Sure. Well, good evening. It was a really good pleasure to, with this group of this committee. It was an honor to be on the, to be asked, but had a great group to bounce ideas off each other and stuff. One of the things that we, you know, like Dan said earlier, we started looking at the data from an individual basis, kind of coming up with our own themes. Then from there, we were asked to, you know, look at it from the group's perspective. And once we were done with that, we, the things coming out of the group matched a lot of the individuals' themes as well. So it was amazing how, you know, how everybody's thought processes from the data kind of merged in. The main resident focus that came out of number, that I, excuse me, that came out of theme one that I noticed was, it was about focusing on the kids and focusing on their lifetime of learning, not just K through 12, not just getting prepared for college, but taking them to their careers, whether it be something in the college realm or something in more of the hands-on type of stuff. In my profession, I deal with a lot of business owners, and one thing that they've always told me, when they're looking for new employees, is the people coming out of college, their skills are fine. That, you know, if they have a job to do, they're very well-prepared. It's the part that they have to communicate to the client or their customers is where they're lacking. And that was one of the focuses that theme one really resonated about, was making sure that those kids could communicate verbally with the business owners' clients and customers. That's pretty much what we decided on theme one.
Awesome. Before you go, Cory, would you introduce your full name and organization that you're representing?
Cory Hoekstrom.
What do you do?
Well, I'm a financial advisor with Frank Fox and Hoekstrom Financial Group.
And aren't you also involved with other organizations in the community?
Lincoln Independent Association, the East Lincoln Business Association, there's a, I'm also a Sunrise Kewaneean, so pretty active in the Lincoln community for the last 20-some years.
Cool. Thank you, Cory.
You bet.
Thanks, Cory.
The reason that's important, folks, to hear who they are, where they come from, is they're also representing all those other viewpoints of sorts, whether it's formal or informal. I know you guys are much more formally representing us, but very informal here. Second, so the next theme, theme number two is future-ready global citizens. Vicky, would you please come up?
Okay.
It's all yours.
Okay. Hi, I'm Vicky Schulenberg. I'm the principal at Freedstrom Elementary School, and I'm going to talk a little bit about theme two, future-ready global citizens. And this one links directly back to the primary mission of Lincoln Public Schools. And when we look at that first bullet point is the development of responsible adults who are productive citizens of a pluralistic community, nation, and world. And when we went into this, many of the activity, many of the thought processes, and when our group was talking, obviously, theme one is important, it's a central mission also of Lincoln Public Schools, but a lot of what we were doing really had to do with theme two, getting citizens ready to, for the world. And I'm going to ask you just to think for a moment about a child who is really, really important to you. And now I want you to think of what that child needs to have in their life at the age of 25. of 25. So, the survey questions, we're talking about high school and post-high school, we did as a staff quite a number of years ago, 25. And this stays on my desk all the time, because I'm not just working with four-year-olds or eight-year-olds or 11-year-olds at an elementary school. We're constantly working to create citizens and adults who are responsible, who are creative, who are critical thinkers, who are able to problem-solve, who are able to think about our world differently, who are able to form opinions, share opinions, and think passionately about what they believe in, as well as listen passionately and understand the people that they are working with in our community. And as we looked at future-ready global citizens, that's really many, many of the themes that we were talking about throughout the three times that we met, and many of the elements that were involved in the survey results online and from the forums really had to do with developing those productive citizens. And so, now, with the strategic plan, we'll look at how we put that central mission into action.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Vicki.
Two themes down, three to go. Number three, support for students. There, boy, you're slick there, Cindy. Snuck up behind me.
Yeah. Good evening, I'm Cindy Reiman-Yost, parent of two current LPS students and one LPS alone. I've also spent my entire professional career working in nonprofits dedicated to children and their families, and also to making sure they all have access to the opportunities of our community. So, this is a topic, support for all students, that was really important to me, both personally and professionally. I wanted to first thank you as a Board of Education for your commitment to gathering and respecting the input of so many diverse voices in this process. Professionally, I have been involved in a lot of strategic plan development processes, and this one truly was one where I felt like my input was valued. So, thank you very much, and it was really great to be a part of this whole process. Support for all students, as you know, as a board, you have been very committed to all means all. As a parent, I have seen how much that comes into play. Our small group discussed the varied needs of students and what this can mean for the teachers on a daily basis in a classroom. It might be a simple health screening, it might be making sure the environment is appropriate for kids with sensory issues, it might be providing advanced academics for kids who need additional challenges, might be making sure there's a place for somebody to eat who has a food allergy. And it also can be being welcoming for students who have just arrived in this country, or a student whose life has changed in an instant because of a devastating event in their family. And the teachers of LPS have to be ready to respond and act. So, we talked as a committee about what that might mean. I also talked to my youngest, who is currently 12, about what this said to him. I said, so do you feel like, you know, your teachers listen to you, care about you, you feel pretty good about how you're doing in school? Yeah, yes, Mom. And then, I said, well, what about all the other kids in your school? I mean, I said, you know, there's like the sporty kids and, you know, the computer kids and art kids and whatever, do you think everybody? He goes, you know, he goes, I think the teachers listen to us and want to understand us, and then they do something to help us. And that, to me, was really powerful, and that's what I think this says. Listen to, understand, and then be ready to take action, and providing the support that students need. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
Awesome. For this next topic, we're actually, two different folks represent, there's some different viewpoints to be shared here, so we're going to first have Rita come up.
Thank you, and good evening. This is the first time that, by the way, Rita Bennett, and currently President of Lincoln Education Association, and I've taught for 25 years in the district as well. This is the first time that I've been able to be involved in this level of the strategic planning process as part of the community study team. And one of the things that struck me the most is, in that opportunity to work with people from all different parts of our community, was the sense that, first of all, our community truly is invested in our public schools. They truly do care about what's happening or about what could happen. So, it was great to see people from all over who were looking at it from a lens of not just this particular task, but also looking toward the future and saying, what could it be? And I found that really encouraging. With theme four, involving support for educators, really overall, I think the overriding thing that came out of that was the fact that it very quickly became apparent as each, as each group, as each person, and then each group shared their thoughts of overriding themes that they got from the data, is the recognition that people are magical, but resources are not. And that so often, we may have people who can, can perform magic in our classrooms, but recognizing that they need the tools that they will use on a daily basis. And so, one of the things that came out of this with respect to the support for educators is the idea that educator support is an important factor in the success of our students, and in making sure that educators have the resources that they need, that are necessary to carry out the mission, especially recognition of the time to collaborate with colleagues. And that's, that's been something I think we've done a lot more of over the past few years through our professional learning communities, and so, it was, it was really refreshing to see that come out. It was kind of an affirmation of some things that we're already doing. And then, also, I think another piece of this that was really, really important is, again, the continued focus on the need for cultural proficiency. Research tells you, it's very easy to find a ton of research out there that tells you that one of the main factors in determining student success is the relationships that students have with their teachers and with the people that they're interacting with during a school day. And that kind of respectful and responsible rapport between them makes a significant difference, and therefore, cultural proficiency really does play an important role in that, especially with respect to the ever-increasing diversity of our student population. So, it was great to visit with people from the community who recognize that as well, and has recognized, I might say, I'm a little biased, but I think Lincoln Public Schools as a leader in working with a diverse population and in continually seeking ways to improve on that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rita.
And speaking on the same thing, Oscar, please.
Good evening, members of this governing board. I would like to express my gratitude to John Neal and his culturally sensible approach as we gathered information from seven ethnic groups during our community conversations. I also want to thank Dr. Leslie Eastman and the Assessment and Evaluation Team for their collaborative efforts and believing that through mutual respect and lending a listening ear, we can find solutions to challenging and complex tasks. In addition, I want to thank Dr. Hicks for supporting me and the team of bilingual liaisons as we find better ways to establish an open line of communication between Lincoln Public Schools and the families that we serve. And of course, I want to thank each and every one of you for being the advance guard as we move forward to a new era in education. You know, last week, as Dr. McIntarfer and I were waiting for a meeting to start, I asked him, so how are you doing in terms of the strategic planning? And he said, and I quote, "You know, Oscar, we have a great deal of information, but my greatest concern is to come up with the words that I can present in a paragraph that will render an accurate view of the voices of many members of this community." All I could said, all I could say at that point in time was, Rob, you've done your job well. In other words, the voices that I hear and that I believe are included in theme number four are collaboration, passion for the work that we must do as educators, diversity in terms of cultural perspectives, professional development in the area of culture, curriculum, and innovative approaches to instruction, as well as creating an environment in which we can challenge our cultural perspectives by the mere example of others. If we are able to implement these recommendations in the next five years, we will have done our job well, and we will be able to guide future generations of global citizens. And I would be remiss not to thank Dan for his direction in guiding this amazing orchestra. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar.
Thanks, Oscar. All righty, theme five, Michelle, please.
My name is Michelle Suarez, I'm with Prosper Lincoln, early childhood developer, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And when I got an email on, I think it was early in January, knowing that the meetings were going to start on January 25th, I was supposed to fly into Omaha at 7:00 that evening, I was going to be able to make the meeting. So, I changed my airline flight. I just want to make sure that you understand how important it is for our community to be a part of this. And so, we're willing to make the adjustments we need to, to be able to be a part of this, and I just appreciate the opportunity. So, in theme five, we're looking at family and community partnerships, and we're really talking about how LPS and the community works together to support kids and families. And it really matches very nicely with our Prosper Lincoln agenda in terms of making sure that students are able to get opportunity to early childhood care and development, that older students are connected with career pathways and with employment opportunities. And so, this really delineates nicely the partnerships that need to happen. I think we're in a critical juncture in the development of partnerships. Lincoln Public Schools has always been committed to partnerships with our community. As our community continues to diversify, and, and we have, in all its forms, I guess I would just say that let's keep that progress going, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this. I want to thank you for listening to Community Voices, and thank you for your leadership and your vision and the belief that it takes all of us to, working together, to make progress for our students and families, and I'll leave it at that.
Awesome.
Thank you, Michelle.
Just in case you couldn't tell, there's a little bit of passion among this group. And, and again, that's just a small sub to the group. What we're going to do right now is actually allow the others that are here in the audience to come up and at least say hello and introduce themselves and where they hail from. Here we go.
I'm Eric Witten, the principal at the Yankee Hill program.
Ryan Zabba, principal at Park Middle School.
J.D. Miller, Director of Curriculum.
Dawn Mazian, Assessment and Evaluation Specialist.
And Megan Simsek, I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Huntington.
And Krista Yocum, and I'm a community member. Thank you.
All righty, so that's where we've been, that's where we're at today. These themes are now officially unveiled for your consideration. What I'd like to do next is just start talking about where do we go from here, what are the next steps that we at least had mapped out way back about a year ago, as Lanny pointed out. So, we're going to continue back to that colorful diagram that has the trapezoid figures in it. So, a couple of details here. Today, April 25th, work session, we're getting things rolling as we speak. As Lanny referred to earlier, there's some one-on-ones planned for the board, for you guys to start digging into this, more one-on-one, to allow you guys to dig in and identify your ideas and your thoughts to help supplement this. The, there's some board, a board work session coming up in July, where further discussions will occur. And along the way here, Dr. Joel, as superintendent, will helping, will be involved in helping start developing what are the action plans to support, whatever direction you all choose to go as a board. Ultimately, we're looking for this board, take this information to set your strategic priorities through your strategic plan, and if things stay on schedule, as they've been thus far, your first reading will be on the 8th of August, and your second reading on the 22nd, at which time, there'll be an approved strategic plan for Steve, Joel, and his team to start enacting. And one key thing here, and again, the timing's critical, because as Dr. D appointed out throughout the whole process, if we can get this set up and approved, and so he can take it and use it, and that's why he's got to be involved, not just starting in September, but throughout the summer months, so that way, when it comes to September, he can go to the new, the new staff, the new teachers, the new faculty, and everybody else they're working with, and roll out the plan and get started on it. Because the intent is to work on this first version of the plan in the September to May time period, so it's not a full year, but it's, at least, it's a school year. And so, the ultimate oversight and leadership will come from Dr. Joel and his team. And then, just to, sometimes what often gets lost in the shuffle of strategic planning, which I think is a critical step, is also the annual reviewing of this. How do we go through and bring closure to the end of this first year's plan? And the key second bullet is staying connected to the community. As you've heard today, there's been countless number of voices heard through countless number of organizations, and the hope and the intent is that to provide some type of tie-back and communication back to all these folks that have contributed thus far. In particular, I know the folks, as you just heard from Michelle's and everyone else just shared, and the group that's here today, this group as well has a vested interest in hearing what actually happened, how did it go, what were the challenges you met, so they'd love to be a part of some type of a closure or a refresh event. Again, details to be forthcoming. But ultimately, it's about closing out the year that just finished, learning from the year behind, and then setting new priorities going forward. The thank yous are countless, too many to do. You see the nine bullets on the screen here? I want to go back to one of my opening comments today, when I shared John Neal and his involvement. He's been the center pin behind all the details you've heard from today. So, again, John, thank you so much for all the effort you've provided, because all the folks up on this, on the screen here have been involved with John's coordination. But something else that stood out to me, just a personal thank you, the volunteer facilitators, which a few of the folks are here that were part of this committee, but Eric, I know you were a volunteer for the very first session that was done, but even these volunteer facilitators that went out among those 49 community sessions to put themselves out in front as a representative, to gather input, and to collect all that, again, I just, that group in particular impressed the heck out of me, so I just want to acknowledge them as well. But beyond that, tons of thank yous. So, here we are at quarter after five, ahead of schedule, which has been our MO most of the time. We're opening the Florida questions, please.
Great, and thank you again for all of you that came this evening. We can't thank you enough, we know it was a lot of work, but now, our work begins. I'm ready for big overarching questions, the smaller questions, I'm going to let you leave those for your one-on-one sessions. Who's starting? Dawn.
Okay, so this is so big, so important, we've been talking about it a long time. I feel like I could go for about a half hour here, but I'm going to limit myself to three things. First, I'd like to speak to process, and it has been coming through loud and clear, not only tonight, but for the past several months, that the process has been very inclusive, forward-thinking. I know that, that our committee was focused on that. I know that that was a focus from the start, and I really appreciate that we had such a great process to go out and get as much unfiltered data from the community as possible. So, I really appreciate the work we did on process. The second thing that I would note is, one of the questions that was asked, talked about how people feel that LPS does delivering world-class educational experiences. And I know that's our question, but I think that that is, it's such an interesting thing, not only for the kind of responses that I'm sure we did get, but every once in a while, I get an email from somebody saying that we need to spend less, lower the levy, and just concentrate on the three Rs. And I understand that way of thinking, but I think that unless, somebody here can tell me that you got a bunch of feedback on that question, saying, no, we don't really want world-class educational experiences for our kids, I'd expect that the three Rs, folks, are very much out of touch with the vast majority of the community who does expect world-class educational experiences for our children. So, I think that that is important. The last thing that I would say is that one of my mentors used to say that one of the big differences between barbaric cultures and civilized cultures is that civilizations plan for the future. And, boy, talk about, you know, planning for the future, and I know we've got several educators in this group, and you know this concept, but what better way to do it than planning for, you know, the education and welfare of your children? And so, I'd like to just finish by saying thank you so much. I can only imagine the days, the hours, the commitment to getting flights changed and all of that, and bringing your different backgrounds, your time, and your expertise to a process that is going to inform decisions that we make for the next several years, guiding how education is delivered in Lincoln Public Schools. So, thank you for that.
Okay, I have Matt next.
Captain can go ahead.
No, Matt, then Captain.
Okay. Hey, thank you, everybody, for your work, really appreciate it. It was really fun to be involved in a lot of these community things with you guys. As I look at this, I guess a question that I have, is I look at question four and five in particular, that were presented to the groups. What is the one thing that you believe LPS must do to enhance the quality of education? Is question four. Question five, what is the big idea that with nothing impossible, that would, you know, push LPS forward, kind of? And I don't know, maybe I just was expecting something slightly different, but is there, where would I see the answers to that? How would I know what people actually, how they responded to? How would I know what people actually, how they responded to that?
I think the key documents is probably the best place.
Come on up, let's speak.
Theme and representative quote charts. What would be the best way to communicate those, John?
I would say two things. We're looking at sharing all those quote charts to go out. I think what's important is, all of the answers to all five questions were discussed and talked about, and they diverged into the theme. So for one person, one of those bullet points on one of the themes might have been the thing they said we need to do for a high school student, as an experience for a high school student before graduation. And the next person said the exact same bullet point, but that's what they thought was a world-class experience. And another person said the exact same bullet point, but that's what they said is their big idea. So it's hard when you look at the five themes to say which one's an answer to this question, because any one of those bullet points could be the answer to all five questions. And that was the incredibly difficult task the community study team had, was taking all of those answers and finding from among the answers what were the themes that went throughout, that became the most important, that resonated the most with our community. So I think you could look in the document that Rob and Leslie can provide the link, and you can look at the raw data. I think the part that what the community study team tried to do was to create, to pull out the essence of all those answers beyond a tally of, this is what was answered here, and how many times, into what was most important to our community. So it's really looking at the information in two different ways. The data thing, the link you'll get, you can start digging down and looking at all the individual answers, that's one way to look at it. And the study team was really looking at themes, what's the essence of the need of the community? And that's what you've seen today, and that's why it doesn't look like the answer to a question. It looks like themes, I mean, it's that broader picture. But the link that Rob and Leslie will be able to provide, then you can dig down deeply into individual.
And there's two levels. One is the individual data.
Thank you.
And the other is some summarization of that individual data.
Matt, you asked the question, there's a few things I want to, you prompted, did you get the answer you're looking for?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah?
I'm going to expand on a couple, I'm glad you brought this question up, because one thing I wanted to reinforce, probably the biggest challenge this study team had was taking all this input and not getting into the tactics and priorities and strategies, which is what your next step is. The goodness is, that information's in there in that raw data form, so I was going to encourage you, especially on these two questions in particular, I think you'll be amazed, and you'll have to sift through the information, because as John said, you know, we're all human beings, we all process differently, we may have the same response to the three different questions, but when you sift through the data, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised to find some pretty unique ideas out there to really think about and take and decide if that's something you guys want to pursue. So I was going to encourage you guys all to go in and look at the raw data. You'll think you'll see some really interesting thoughts in there.
Well, and that's what I think, you know, as I experienced being in part of those groups, there were some people that had just phenomenal ideas, you know, some things that just was like, "Ah, never really thought about that." I didn't know that there would be that much support for dual-language program, or online learning, or mentoring, job shadowing, you know, all those sorts of ideas I felt like were just very great ideas, and I loved hearing from the community. And like I said, I just didn't see them in here, and so I'm glad to know that we can find those. Yeah, if we could get that on email, that'd be a great first place to start with.
You bet. And trust me when I say, I had to condition this study team to focus on the what we want to achieve, big picture, and not get into the hows, because those hows are embedded in there. The hows are those strategies and tactics and things that you're referring to. That was not this group's task, that's your task to decide, not them.
Perfect. And I think Annie, do you want to respond to that?
If I could, just being on the committee, we got access to a lot of the information, but I decided, when we started the meetings, that I was not going to look at anything more than what the community study group got to see, because I got to realize, and I started doing that, and started going, "Oh, we could do this, we could do that," and I realized if we got too deep into that too soon, then we're creating the direction. And was trying really hard to, we need to be careful in not creating that direction. And actually, so now, I'm actually pretty excited that I have this huge notebook and a whole summer to read it in, oh, only by June, right? Because I agree with you, there are some really great things in for us, for us now to kind of look at, and how does this fit in what we heard was the direction we want to go? So I think it's coming out at the exact right time. I mean, I personally started reading some of it, and then I realized, I can't read this, because it's too many, it's too many, "Let's do this, and let's do that," and it's, we needed a better, well, it took us out from active listening and took us into active doing, and so I think now it's pretty exciting. We can now look at it and put active doing into the active listening.
Sure.
Just, FYI, I haven't even read it, it's a lot.
Can I just tack onto that? Lanny and I were having the conversation that, yes, there's been a lot of data collected, we've got these broad themes, but I expect that we're going to be mining this data for years to come, trying to drill down and get some of those other ideas that didn't necessarily bubble to the top just yet.
Yeah, and just very quickly, six years ago, when we went through this process, it was very, very similar. The big ideas emerged after, from the follow-up conversation. Career Academy, for example, wasn't explicitly identified by anybody, but school-to-career opportunities connecting with what our labor needs are was prevalent. So the board at the time then created that as a strategic priority.
Perfect. Note that Kathy has been very patient. Kathy, go ahead.
This is kind of like waiting for the bus, and everybody steps in front of you, and all of a sudden the bus left, and you're at the time that you missed the bus.
We'd come back for you. For you, yes.
What I've noticed is, first, I'm going to start with a thank you, because I know so many of these individuals, and I've also been through this process. And I've been a board member for 16 years, and one of the things we like to look at strategic goals is, we have to see it from this level. So when someone talks about mining the data, that was all your job. My job is to see how that data works into being a good board member. And so, I've kind of drilled this down to a couple of ideas. First, the themes. I don't see, it's like your kid going home from school, and you ask him, "So how'd school do today?" "Great." "What'd you do?" "Nothing." "What'd you have for lunch?" "Don't remember." "What was the best part of the day?" "Recess." Anybody experience that? And yet, when you drill down with your kid, you find out, "They had a great math lesson, they had great teachers, had some interaction with some students." So what the themes did for me is, they really reinforced the path that we forged. I think Vicky said it best, she uses the mission, keeps it on her desk. I'm sure there are teachers, principals, even some students that have those ideas that they've gone in and they've read those. The second is, it prepared ideas of themes on where we need to go. I don't know that the path is really different. It might be how we get there, because our students are different today than they were 40 years ago when I was in school. And the third part is, it adds that it changes in our community, how we react to those changes, and what subjects we need to reinforce, and how we introduce them. And actually, for me, the ultimate is, I need to prioritize the strategies with a focus on the physical, emotional, educational, and financial resources to make sure what our community sees our education system should be comes to fruition. So thank you for all your hard work. I know how hard it is, and I know that I left you three and a half minutes for somebody else.
It's got to 5:40. Okay. Lanny, anyone else? Do you have anything? Anyone?
Yeah.
Okay, you.
So, actually, my first question would be, board colleagues, would you please join me in giving a big round of applause to our community study team? They did a lot of work. So, a couple of questions that I've had from board members as we've worked through this process, just a couple of things that I wanted to point out as we look at the next steps. One question was, okay, so how do strategic goals relate to annual goals, relate to the themes that we heard tonight? So, as I look at it, tonight, we've received five themes from our community study team that is a result of the voices that we heard from our community. Over the next few months, as a board, our job will be to take those themes and turn those into strategic goals. And that's a process that we will use one-on-one sessions with Dr. Joel and myself. We will use work sessions, we will have first reading, we'll have second reading, so we'll go through our usual processes to convert those themes into strategic goals. In parallel to that, we also have what we do every year. Every summer, we do a board retreat, we develop annual goals. Now, because of timing, we had a little bit of a challenge here. In an ideal world, you would want to approve your annual goals after you've approved your strategic goals. But also, in an ideal world, you want to give us as a board enough time to develop strategic goals that we'll all be comfortable with.